Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining us this evening for our July 22, 2025, meeting at the Vets Hall. I will ask the city clerk to establish a quorum and call the meeting to order.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Echols?
Present.
Councilmember Landrum?
Present.
Councilmember Lefay?
Present.
Mayor Protem Edwards? Here.
And Mayor Wixton?
Here.
Thank you. And with that, I will ask Captain Hosh to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you, Captain. Thank you to the rest of the Fire Department for joining us this evening, or today's crew. With that, we will move on to closed session reports.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Prior to tonight's regular meeting, councilman in closed session to discuss the appointment of the city manager, no action was taken that requires reporting under the Brown Act.
Thank you. And we will move on to Mayor and Councilmember reports. I'm going to let everybody go first, but I am going to kick off by just real quickly welcoming, for those of you who weren't here on July 10, welcoming our interim city manager Andrea Lucre. She joined our team on July 14 and will be with us during the transition and recruiting of a full-time city manager. And please feel free to reach out to her, and I'm sure when we get to the city manager reports, she may want to share with you. So with that, I will go to my right, Councilmember Lefay.
Welcome, everyone. I attended the Homeless Coalition meeting last week, and I have to report two things. One, Capslo achieved a grant to open a warming center here in Morro Bay. They're only lacking one thing, the place. I am actually engaged at St. Timon's to see if I can get them to agree to hold the warming center. Capslo has the money, has the volunteers, has all the equipment. We just need a place to hold it for Morro Bay, for a three-year grant. So if anyone in the audience or anyone at home knows of a place, please contact me. Second off, the City of San Luis Obispo has just broken ground for the Welcome Home Village, which is a transitional tiny homes, 54 cabins that will as a housing project that will break ground shortly, and it's intended to move the homeless into long-term housing. And that's 45 cab- 54 cabins over there on Bishop Street, over there by the Old County General Hospital. And then last, I went to the Rec and Parks meeting last Thursday, and the pickleball people presented their plan to put in four more pickleball courts, removing the basketball courts over to the amphitheater. They have an architectural plan. The Parks and Rec Commission recommended the plan, and it's being moved to the city council. The seniors will be raising all the money for the construction of this particular project if we decide to go forward. And then Greg Colak was there, and he discussed that we will be replacing the playground equipment at Kaiser, Liza Kaiser Park very shortly. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Echols?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy summer to everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Couple of brief announcements. We know that we are starting the election season coming up, and I've had several people ask me about something relative to me personally, and I just want to be very clear about it. My name's been thrown around a lot as a potential candidate for running for second district county supervisor. I can tell you 100% under with with no uncertain terms, I will not be running for county supervisor. I have absolutely no desire to run for supervisor. I have three and a half years left here, serving in my current position for our wonderful city, and that's what I'm going to continue to dedicate my energy and efforts toward. So if you hear any rumors that I may be a candidate for county supervisor, that's exactly what they are, just rumors and hearsay. I guarantee you, I will not be running for that. I attended the Chamber Mixer a week, week and a half ago. It was down on the waterfront, and it was a really, really good event. We had a lot of community members show up. It was, I think maybe because it was on the waterfront at the landing, it was well-attended. Maybe the margaritas had something to do with it, but it was a great, it was a great event. So congrats to the Chamber for that. I'm the liaison for the Planning Commission, between the Planning Commission and the city council, and we do have an open seat on the Planning Commission. So if you or someone you know out in the community would be interested in applying for that Planning Commission seat, we want to hear from you. And the last thing to say is just, I'm excited about where we are as a city right now. We obviously are having some transition at the top in terms of leadership. I view that as a positive thing. This is some needed changes. And going forward, I just have a lot of confidence in this city council, as well as as well as the staff that is helping us bring onboard the best leadership that we can in terms of staff. So I'm just very excited and wanted to share that positivity with you. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Echols. I appreciate the sentiment. So I attended along with the mayor of the Fourth of July Family Fun Day. It was awesome at Tidlin Park with my family from out of town. And I tell you, this is one of those really memorable events, good music, good food, lots of fun games for the kids. I know that we are known for this event out in the region, and I hope that we definitely continue to do it. I want to thank the Fire Department, Parks and Rec, Kurt Carmichael and his staff, as well as the maintenance crew for being out there and making sure that all that event got taken care of, put on from closing out. So thank you. The Chamber will be presenting their monthly breakfast on the bay on August 20 at the Morro Bay Community Center from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. If you want to learn about anything related to the governor, the Government Affairs Committee, and what they've been working on, and how that impacts both the economy and the local businesses, this is a great thing for you to attend. There is limited registration at the door, but you can also go to morrowchamber.org/b, I think it's B-O-T-B. And lastly, this is a reminder to visit the city website. Right now, we have the Morro Bay Transit online survey that's going to end July 31, and it's being conducted by the Morro Bay Transit and the RTA to learn how to serve our community in particular and its members who ride and those who don't. So this is a really great opportunity. I actually had my husband take it, and and it was a really good survey. It gave a really good understanding of, you know, some of the pitfalls and some of the good points of our current transportation situation in our community. So I hope that you check that out and participate. You can get to that through the website on Hot Topics as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended just two meetings the last few weeks, Lafco and Slow Cog, and want to echo Councilmember Edwards' comments about the Fourth of July Family Fun Day, the bike parade and the event, and what a great job staff did, everybody who was down there from all the departments, police, fire, harbor, Public Works, rec, everyone. And I want to do a big shout out to Mike Myers, Meyer Drilling, for coming down, taking his time to bring his crane, because our fire department, fire engine wasn't available at the time it was being serviced, so that we could have that beautiful American flag flying over the event. I appreciate Myers always stepping up like some of the other local contractors and coming to the city's rescue when we have events like this. It means a lot, and it really added to the the look of the day. So it was very special. And along the line of surveys, please watch, coming up, there will be a survey shortly up on the city website for information regarding the recruitment for our city manager and having public input on that. So with that, I will turn it over to the city manager for updates. Oh, excuse me, no, I won't. Councilmember Landrum, I'm sorry.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and as I'm not there, I have no, no updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I will go to the city manager for reports and updates.
Thank you, Mayor Wixom. I just have a couple. First, I wanted to thank the council and the city staff and the members of the public for such a warm welcome. I'm on day seven, and so all is well at this point. I did want to let the folks know that if you see some odd things next door at the city hall annex, which is right next door to city hall, it's because we had a small fire there, and we're currently doing an evaluation. The city's insurance company is coming in, and we'll be restoring that building in the near future. But it is currently closed, and you'll see that that pretty yellow tape across the doors at this point. I was going to talk a little bit about the Planning Commission vacancy, but thank you, Councilmember Echols, who did that. Again, the applications are due by August 1. And just a heads up that I'll be visiting throughout the next few months, the various advisory boards and special committees to see what everybody is doing. So if you see my my smiling face there, it's because I'm just curious what's going on in those boards and special groups. And then finally, I did want to echo Mayor Wixom's invitation to please feel free to come by city hall and say hello. My, I'm an open-door policy type person, but I would love to hear from you and your thoughts and concerns, and maybe even some praises. So just know that I've got an open-door policy, and I'm there pretty often. So thank you.
Thank you, city manager Lucre. Subcommittee reports. Mr. Singwald, any updates?
There are no subcommittee updates.
Thank you. Oh, all the way up here for that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We have no other at this time. Mr. Qualick's out, and I can say that we have not had a subcommittee meeting with the water reclamation group at this time. So with that, we will move on. And I do have a proclamation this evening for National Night Out. And I see the police chief making her way up very slowly this way. So let me begin by reading this. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a national community building campaign on Tuesday, August 5, 2025, entitled National Night Out, and whereas the National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in Morro Bay to join over 38 million neighbors across 17,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes strong police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighbors neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live and work. And whereas neighbors in the Morro Bay assist the local law enforcement agencies through joint community building efforts and support National Night Out 2025. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors of Morro Bay come together with police to work together to build a safer, more caring community, and now therefore it be resolved that the Morro Bay City Council does hereby call upon all neighbors of Morro Bay to join the Morro Bay Police Department and National Association of Town Watch in support of National Night Out and proclaim Tuesday, August 5 as National Night Out in Morro Bay.
Wonderful. Mayor, city council, thank you so much. And mayor, thank you for that proclamation. This is really just a very formal invitation to our community for a good old-fashioned barbecue in the park. It's at Cloisters Park on August 5 from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We are absolutely excited to host another one this year. We do do this annually. And it's really just to bring people together within our community to share some positive interactions with your police department. Our staff will be out there. We'll have the Fire Department, Harbor Department, Public Works, Recreation is going to come out and do some face painting for us. That's always fun. We'll have a bounce house. So if anybody wants to come out and challenge some officers to an obstacle course bounce house, that's always fun. It's hard to pull those kids out of the bounce house. We're going to have barbecue hot dogs. We're going to have shave ice, which is always a big popular thing for us. And really excited this year because we've gone out and really found some sponsors within our community to support this event. We're going to have games. We're going to have prizes. We're going to have some public safety demonstrations from fire and police. And like I said, a bounce house. And really, this year, we've had generous sponsors in the past. This year, we've really tried to engage with our community, with our businesses, and have them come out and truly support this event, because it is that community partnership that keeps Morro Bay safe and and continue to do so. So Came Security has joined us this year, Spencer's Market, Estero Bay News, the newest, Estero Bay News has a nice flyer, National Night Out flyer with all the information. Costco this year has joined us, which is fantastic. They're going to bring some games out for the kids, Reyes Coca-Cola bottling. So we'll have some beverages other than water, which is always nice. Albertsons, of course, always supports us. And then this year, we've really reached out to some of our nonprofits, our Girl Scouts, and our Morro Bay and Bloom is also going to join us. So we're really excited about this event. Want everybody to come out. Love to make it our biggest year yet. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief Watkins. And I think all of us have attended, and it is a wonderful event for all ages. Thank you for hosting it again. With that, we'll move on to public comment. I have a handful of speaker slips, and I'm going to start with speaker slips that offered to do one in two minutes before going to the three minutes. So I will start with Alice Kolb, followed by Courtney Shepherd, followed by Nicole Dorfman.
My name is Alice Kolb. I'm a resident in Morro Bay, and I'm here to invite you to a dramatic presentation by the Historical Society of Morro Bay. It will tell the story of what prohibition was like for Morro Bay from 1920 to 1933. Authentic finger food snacks, non-alcoholic beer, and sparkling cider will be served. And we hope to see you there at the Calvary Lutheran Church Fellowship Hall, Sunday, the 27th at 3:00.
Thank you, Alice.
Sorry, I forgot the order. Courtney Shepler, Morro Bay. I wanted to come and talk about July 4, since we're, this is the first council meeting after July 4. I imagine that you've gotten some correspondence from residents about fireworks and what is our position as a city on managing the fireworks situation. I just would like to invite you to have that dialogue with the public and get input. It concerns me that Morro Bay may be different than a lot of the other communities around us in allowing more fireworks activity than some of the, some of the surrounding communities, putting us at additional risk. You look at what happened in Templeton on July 4 with fireworks and, you know, the loss of that icon to that community because of teenagers and fireworks. And we just don't want something like that to happen here. I know people feel strongly either way about, you know, they're pro fireworks or they're not. With us, we've, you know, had our dog on the maximum medication she was allowed, and she still didn't come out of the closet until 4 o'clock in the morning that night. So I know a lot of us with dogs deal with that struggle. I feel like in Morro Bay, our houses are too dense to have these backyard fireworks going off. You know, it allows a little entertainment for some folks at the at the expense of many others. So I would just invite you to have that dialogue with the community so that every everyone's voices can be heard. And in researching this bill, I read about how in the past you tried to get a Morro Bay fireworks show, you know, back on. I love a good professional fireworks show. I just don't like the booms that go all night long. But one idea, if you haven't seen a drone show, like a drone laser show, they're actually very, very cool, and it could be something that Morro Bay does that's different. I don't know what they cost, but if if there's enough planning involved, then that's perhaps an alternative that could bring the community together. And it's very kid-friendly, and it's dog-friendly, because there's not a lot of noises. But I've seen them before, and they're actually really, really cool. And imagining something like that with a rock as a backdrop could be something neat for us to do on July 4 in the future. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, Nicole Dorfman. Welcome back. I am here tonight representing React Alliance, and I am just promoting our event that we're having this weekend, Saturday, at Tidlin's, another event at our beautiful park down there on the bay. It's going to be from 1 to 5 p.m. There's going to be great music, Jill Knight, and then also the Zongo All-Stars. We are having a beer, wine, and hard cider garden. There's going to be food trucks, which are wonderful local food trucks. There's going to be some raffles, a Kid Zone, dancing, fun with your neighbors. We're also having a flotilla, which is a joyful warrior flotilla. And basically, anything that floats, get on it, and it'll be a short, you know, short float up and back. And that will begin at 12:45 from the Tidlin's dock. We're also offering prizes for the best costumes and decoration. So it's just going to be a wonderful day. It is, we are asking for donations at the door to get in. Nobody will be turned away for lack of funds. We want everybody to come and enjoy our beautiful community. And this, unlike some of our other events, this is not a protest. It's not a rally. It is a celebration of our coastal communities. So I invite everybody on behalf of React Alliance. We have a flyer here. It's out on the, there's one on the table by the entrance, if anybody wants to check the QR code or read more of the details. But thank you, and I hope to see you on Saturday.
Barry Brannon, followed by Linda Winters, and followed by Gary Johnson.
Good evening. Thank you, council, councilman, and mayor, and new city manager. My subject tonight is, it's the elephant in the room. Every month, we all get our sewer and water bill. When that sewer and water new project was proposed, there wasn't quite enough money. So they put a little surcharge. And the surcharge has nothing to do with how much you use. It's on the sewer bill and on the water bill. And we were promised that that surcharge would go away. And obviously, that's a hard thing to do. So the most obvious thing is to find a way to reduce the cost that we have to pay to finance the new project. We are in, as we all know, in partnership with a piece of property that's sitting there dormant on Atascadero Boulevard. That property can generate, with the right things, it can generate TOT. It it can open up the city and make it look better. And it's basically a project, another project that the city really doesn't have the staff or manpower or experience to develop. If you look at our capital improvement projects that we have, they're not moving, and we need more staff to make a move. So the most obvious thing to me, and I've done a lot of real estate personally and for big corporations, the most obvious thing you do is you take your assets and you apply them to reduce your debt load. And I believe that somewhere in closed session, you're probably talking about this. I see it every once in a while. I can't come to closed session, so I can't talk to you there. But my suggestion is, if you have an offer from our partner, I understand right now, we own 60%, they own 40%, and there's actually another little piece in there that we own 100% of where our city yard is. So I'd like to see us move our city yard across the street into another dormant piece of property we have sitting there. It's an acre and a half next to that fancy hotel, and it's just sitting there attracting problems. And I'd like to see move our city yard across the street, our corporate yard, and I'd like to sell everything we own, except obviously where our lift station is, to our other partner. And let's take the capital that would come from that and use it to retire the debt and subsequently take off to surcharge, because those surcharges, they're not, they had nothing to do with how much you use. And those costs affect the lower-income people the most. It's the biggest whack. They got to pay their sewer. They got to pay their water. And that would be an enormous thing. We're talking maybe, and I don't know what the number is exactly, I think it's $45 or $75. But the point is, that needs to come off. That was the promise, the previous council, when they brought us the Taj Mahal out on wherever it is out there, that we were going to get that surcharge. It was going to go away. Please do what you can. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Linda Winters, 31-year resident, always at the city council meetings. I've only missed two in the last seven years. My mother always used to say, if you can't say something nice, don't say anything at all. I'm sure you've all had that saying to you. And I'll explain why I'm saying that. I was at the meeting on the 24th of June, listening to the announcements about various different meetings that had been attended, and smack dab in the middle, and there was this statement, and the city manager was dismissed. Wait, what? I couldn't believe my ears. The announcements carried on. We received no explanation whatsoever, nothing, no notice to the citizens of Morro Bay, nothing. During that same meeting, Police Chief Watson had given a concise report on the update of the need of police equipment to be updated from analog to digital with a dollar figure of about $1 million plus, reasonable to keep our police officers and all of us safe. Within days of that, there were clips from several of the news media saying Ms. Kimble was dismissed without cause, but will receive some type of severance pay. Let's fast forward to the special meeting on July 10 to select an interim city manager. I chose not to speak at that public comment. Apparently, my not speaking spoke volumes. During, during that meeting, there was large dollar figures mentioned, quarter million here, quarter million there, all for city manager's position. Not sure why anyone would ever want that job, especially when you can be dismissed without cause with no explanation to the city, citizens of Morro Bay. Here's a novel idea. Let's not have a city manager. Let's put that money towards updated equipment to the police force that the police force needs to keep us all safe. And I deeply apologize to my mom. Sorry, Mom. I just couldn't say something nice.
Gary, Gary Johnson, followed by Kirian, and after Kirian is Linda Merrill.
Oh, been a while since I've been up here. Anyway, welcome, the mayor, city manager, and Andrea, excuse me, interim city manager. Anyway, Andrea Lucre, I'm tongue-tied. And thank you for picking. I know we're going to have a good lawyer. I understand you picked one. Beautiful. I just love this city. I'll tell you, I got to tell you a story, and I'm going to only have too much time here, but I'm not here to embarrass my wife, Nancy Johnson, former city councilwoman. I'm not here to embarrass her. I'm here to talk about the Fire Department, and I'm talking about how well diversified this city has. We have everything here now. It's fantastic. We came back from a vacation back east. We're on a boat trip, and we came back on a Thursday. My wife wasn't feeling good. The family was trying to talk to Nancy, and she was stumbling words, et cetera, et cetera. So on Friday, I decided enough's enough. She's laying in bed, hardly could breathe. I called the Fire Department. We have one of the best fire departments, and I'm, I've been around, I'm 88 years old, and I've been all over the place. And the police department is fantastic, too. They, I called them. They were here within a few minutes, and they jumped in and took two vials off of her and said, she's going to the hospital now. He didn't say why. Now, get ready. The ambulance was there. We got her into the ambulance. I got to the, I got to the, to the hospital. And I said, what, how's she doing? She says, she's in bad shape. She's only got about 10 or 15% of oxygen left in her lungs. She's in there right now. We're going to get her in there. And we had four doctors working on her, all because we had a fantastic fire department that rushed to our scene, got her going, knew immediately what was wrong with her. And so she's doing well. She's, she came out of it. She was a whole month in the hospital getting her ready. Well, she went to the home across from, from the French hospital. She was there for three weeks and one week- She was there for three weeks and one week in the, in the Sierra Vista. Sierra Vista is fantastic. Have they changed? God, I love them. They had doctors and doctors working on her, she was back and forth. So anyway, with that said, I want to say, I just love this city, and it really hurts me, too. I won't go into that one. Maybe next time when I get up here to talk. But anyway, thank everybody, and city manager, interim, you're going to do a great job. Thank you. We love you. Okay, that's it. I got 14 seconds left. Anyway.
Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, okay.
Community is one of those funny words that always makes me kind of uncomfortable when I not only hear it being used, but when I use it myself. I'm right up there with the word "natural," not necessarily sure exactly what it means, mostly because it seems to mean something different to everybody. To me, community is kind of like electromagnetic field lines. They extend into infinity, and they just kind of get weaker as you go out. However, oftentimes, I will hear the word "community" being used in a fashion that, let's say, betrays a belief in the value of control. I would never assume that I can control who gets to be a part of my community, because as I said, my community never really stops. There's only greater degrees of community and, of course, less. So this is a very specific reason I'm bringing this up, because, of course, we had a proclamation tonight for the National Night Out, and it's all dedicated to this very particular version of the ideal of community. It was also mentioned as well tonight, of course, that we are looking into, I believe it was a warming shelter, and of course, I've mentioned this before, that the people who would end up living in one of these warming shelters, or tiny homes, or whatever it is we're talking about here, are also members of our community. But because some of us don't like the way they live their lives, they have been determined to be unfit to be members of the community. I need to remind you, some of these people, they do not desire to live in a house. And I guess apparently because that's unsightly, it is not to be allowed. And if we can stick them in a system like this, where we have very particular rules, then we can better police their behaviors. I highly recommend you go through and you read, I don't remember the name of the authors, but the original paper, I believe it was, it was an article in perhaps a magazine or a newspaper years ago, for "Broken Windows Policing," because this is all about maintenance of quote-unquote "community." And it starts out by making the case, what the community really wants, what the people in the community really want, is not actually to be safe. What they want is to be able to feel safe, even if in practice, they are far less so.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Linda Merrill, and I'm, I'm here to say yippee for the pickleball courts. And I'm also speaking tonight about not changing the public comment period. Forty years ago, I came to public comment. I can't even remember what I came to talk about, but it was one of my first council meetings ever. And at that council meeting, a fisherman showed up. I mean, he was in his fishing boots, and he had some complaint about something down at the Embarcadero or whatever. And so, I thought, this is cool, you know? People can come to this public comment period and, from the community as they are, and say whatever's on their minds. And that really impressed me. So tonight, I'm asking you all, please, don't change this public comment period. It's important to me. I wrote a bunch of other stuff, but so many people have written correspondence that is much more articulate than anything I can say. But I just want to say it's important to me. I get really annoyed when people abuse the public comment, because I think it should generally be for city business. But I do appreciate that anybody in the community can come and say whatever they feel like, you know? I mean, this is our city, and as Mr. Johnson says, we all love it, and it's important to us. And you give us an opportunity to speak our minds and kind of participate. This is sort of participating in what goes on in our city. So please don't change that. I'd really appreciate it if you didn't. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Linda. I have no more speaker slips. Public comment is open for items not on the agenda. Items not on the agenda, thank you.
I didn't want you to miss my voice. I'm June Swall, and good evening, Council, and Mayor, you, and all staff. Anyway, I appreciate having a voice, too. I'm actually delivering a message from the Friends of Morro Elementary School. And they have been in communication with Kent Nangano, and he sent a message, and I'll tell you about him, maybe you all know, but his message is, in regard to the school, losing such a beautiful historic architectural icon would be an irreplaceable loss of Morro Bay's heritage and integrity as a, as a community. And if you are not acquainted with him, he is considered one of the outstanding conductors for both operatic and orchestral repertoire. Since September of 2015, he has been general music director of the Hamburg State Opera and chief conductor of the Philharmonic State Orchestra Hamburg. He'll be the next chief conductor and artistic director of the National Orchestra in Madrid, Spain, starting September 2026. He's been honorary conductor of the Berlin Symphony since 2006, and the Montreal Symphony Orchestra since 2021. And so, his connection to Morro Bay, he grew up here, and he attended Morro Elementary School, and he was taught by Boto Corascelli. And I think many of us are in love with that man for what he contributed to this community and to our children and to music. There is also, he mentioned that he would be very interested in doing a fundraising concert for the community. So anyway, he's very in love with the school and supportive of our continuing it. Thank you.
Thank you, June.
Hi, I'm Margaret Carmen. I apologize if I'm not supposed to talk about this now, but I got to go home, I'm in pain. I was going to say to Ms. Alice, but she left, that last year, when the Historical Society gave their present, it was a play about the, I'm sorry, I don't know her name, remember it. The Windmill House. It was so good! And so, I was going to say, yay, we all should go, after we go to the fundraiser on Saturday, to go to that on Sunday. So I, I wanted to say, I really hope that you do not vote to make it 30 minutes for public speaking, because I want to remind you how absolutely precious and life-changing it was for both us to watch and those children that came and spoke about Morro Bay Elementary, because had it been that we could only have 30 minutes and they didn't get to speak, it'd be past their bedtime, right? So I just feel like it's, could you just go at a, meeting by meeting to decide if you want to reduce the time, right? And also, I wanted to acknowledge that you guys have really long days when you have your closed sessions, and is there any way to have a break in between those closed sessions and this? So it doesn't feel like, oh my God, how many people are going to get up there in front of me tonight? But we really do appreciate the opportunity that we get to get up here and talk. And I want to say about the, I don't, you know, I'm really low-tech, and there's a lot of us that are older, and I'm like, for my age group, I'm really low-tech, and I wish we still could have a, what do you call that, projector? Yeah, because I think that there's, you know, we're elderly population here, and I just don't think everybody knows how to do all that about downloading. And so, thank you for listening. I got a minute plus left. I'm going.
City Council staff members, Michelle Lester-Catering, North Morro Bay. To piggyback on what the lady said regarding the fireworks in Morro Bay, annually, it is a disaster. It's intrusive, it's harmful to our wildlife, it's harmful to our residents, our seniors who suffer PTSD. There's just no reason for this to continue in this day and age. The city of Morro Bay needs to ban them, plain and simple. We should not be encouraging this. There needs to be continuity within the county and the city. When the county is banning them all around us, people will flock to Morro Bay, and they start doing them on the beaches, they do them in our neighborhoods. And the bottom line is, it taxes our resources, it taxes our fire department, it taxes our police department. And then it taxes the residents for the next two days afterwards, because we're the ones that are down on the beach volunteering for several hours to clean up the mess. And it's not just the trash, it's the remnants of the fireworks. People don't pick them up. They cause, they're basically, it's pollution. It is water pollution, and it hurts our environment, it hurts the sea life that we are supposed to be protecting as an estuary. So it doesn't make sense. I would hope the city would possibly look into the new drone situation, and using that, I know we've done lasers in the past, and it didn't work out because we're fog, you know, there's fog in the area. But something needs to be brought forward. So I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment for items not on the agenda?
I'm Nancy Johnson, and now that my husband's thoroughly embarrassed me, I just want to say how glad I am and how happy I am to have Andrea back. I think it shows a wonderful level of professionalism and courage on her part to come back and take this job and work as the interim city manager. I was there on the council when she was fired without cause. That was a very painful experience for all of us. Thank you, Andrea, for caring enough about our city to come back.
Anyone else for public comment for items not on the agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Just a couple quick comments. Yes, as this last speaker talked about, we did do laser shows and things, drone shows, we have tried them before, just like fireworks, we live in a coastal town, so you don't see much. Public comment, closed session, public comment is available at every closed session prior to the beginning, so if anyone wants to come for items on the closed session, public comment at City Hall is always available and welcome. Mr. Schultz, any comment on why we don't report out personnel issues?
Sure, with all personnel issues, either in the public entity or in private, are protected by First Amendment rights, and they're entitled to their privacy, so we're not allowed to discuss it. Ms. Kimball or any person that is released is welcome to speak about it, but as an entity, we're not allowed to speak about it.
Thank you for clarification on that. And Chief McCrayne, would you please address the, for the public, the comment? I know we don't allow fireworks, so I don't know if there's a misunderstanding that the city does.
So the way the municipal code is written, fireworks are allowed on private property only. We do not allow them to be sold within city limits. They are not allowed on, on city-owned land, they're not allowed on the beaches, they're not allowed on the roadways. If somebody does fireworks on their own private property, they have to be safe and sane fireworks that are sold at, fireworks stands at other areas in the city, or in the county. When the county did ban fireworks, that happened just before the 4th of July, and we weren't made aware of it with enough time to evaluate or look at bringing any items to the city council that could be implemented before the 4th of July. If there is a desire to take action on that, that's something we can evaluate. We did have discussions with City Manager Kimball before her departure, and determined that there was not enough time to bring action before council that could be implemented before the 4th of July.
I would assume that the fire chiefs group that you meet with in the county is having these conversations right now in light of the Templeton situation?
Yes, that's definitely a discussion about what's going to happen through all the municipalities. There are still some that do want to continue with them, there's others that do not, but it is a source of discussion, and it's something we've discussed here as what options are available from the fire department. Again, it hasn't been a big impact on us here, but there is always that potential here in the city.
Do we have any citing citations?
The fire department did not issue, I believe the police department did issue a couple citations that they witnessed.
So it is being addressed?
Yes.
Case by case. Thank you for that. Thank you, Chief. Anything else, anybody? With that, we'll move on to public comment for the consent agenda, public comment for items on the consent agenda. AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
With that, I will close, close public comment on the consent agenda and bring it back to council. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Does anybody want to pull anything?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item 7C.
7C. Anyone else? Councilmember Landrum?
No, not for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll move approval of consent agenda 7A and 7B, and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilmember Echols?
Thank you. The reason that I pulled this is there is a inconsistency, I'm trying to find it, I think it was just a typo, in the amount, sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. The amount, Director Seemold, in the actual lease has the old, there it is, it's item 3.1, monthly rent, tenant agrees to pay $5,216, is written out in words, and then the numerical value parenthetically says $5,528. So it's just that the, the words didn't get updated to the new numbers, so that needs to be corrected. And sorry, I didn't get that to you before tonight, it's been busy.
Thank you, Councilmember Echols. We'll make sure to make that correction before the lease is finalized and signed.
And that's it. I mean, in reading through the lease, I had a little bit of concern about the two-year lease in the face of the discussions that we've had, waiting for the waterfront master plan, not waiting for the waterfront master plan. But then this does have a, I think it's a 60-day, yeah, 60-day. it's a 60-day, yeah, 60-day clause that either party can terminate. I would hate to see that happen to the less E that is signing this. Hopefully that doesn't happen, but that does give me some comfort from protecting the city's position, that if something came up for a higher and better use of that property, we would have the out of 60 days. So with the correction in that, in the clause 3.1, just making those numbers consistent, I moved to approve item 7.7.c.
Any discussion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. With that, we will move on to our only business item this evening, only item. And I will turn it over to our city attorney, Mr. Schultz.
Good evening again. The item before council tonight is a review and discussion of proposed changes to the council policies and procedures manual. The council's policies and procedures manual was adopted in 2001, and at that time, I was the city attorney who prepared the initial council's policies and procedures. I'm actually kind of proud of the policies and procedures, as because if you look at other cities, not only in the county, but elsewhere through the state, have actually adopted some of the exact same policies into their city policies and procedures, adapting different language maybe in some of them that adapt to their cities and not ours. I also recall when we first adopted this in 2001, I called it a working document, and that it should always be reviewed and updated throughout every year, and the city has been consistently doing that. They've made 29 amendments to our council's policies and procedures in a 24-year period. So I commend you for continually to review these constantly, to make certain they are keeping up with your practice and also what's happening at the state level. I'm going to briefly highlight what those changes are, and then we'll open them up for any questions that you have. Section 1.2.7, the order of business, it's proposed to remove the moment of silent and establish time limits for announcements. Section 1.3, the meeting procedures, there's language added to encourage council early feedback and questions to staff. There's also language that would prohibit substitute motions. There's also language that would discourage side conversations and the use of personal electronic devices during council meetings. And there's language that formalizes the process for how we receive hybrid public comment. Section 1.3.6.7, roll call votes, this is just returning to our previous and more common practice of how we do roll call votes. Section 1.3.7.3 is the general public comment, and this would allow, at the discretion of the mayor, to limit general public comment for items not on the agenda to 30 minutes. And general public comments for items not on the agenda would then be reopened at the end of the public hearing and business for any additional speakers. And I can elaborate further on that, on the history of how we got to where we do do, allow speakers to speak on items on the agenda during that period of time, if you'd like, at the end of this. But section 1.5, AB 2449, is the telephonic requirements that have changed under the Brown Act, that allow you to do those not only by the traditional way, but other ways, as one of our council members is tonight. Section 2.3 is, actually, I'm sorry, section 1.6 is the public use of visual aids at meetings. This establishes a process to submit visual aids beforehand, so that we're protected against computer viruses and any inappropriate images. Section 2.3 is access to communication technology systems. This would allow for the council to have city-owned cellphones that could be issued to them, and also establishes what our current practice is with regards to laptops and other communication devices. Section 3.14 is the issuance of proclamations and commendations and special recognition. It just establishes policy language, so we know when those can be issued. Section 4.6 and 4.7 establishes the policies and best practices for council members who use social media, complies with the new Brown Act requirements that were put into law the last few years. Section 5.6 is the council handling of mail and how the staff processes the mail that it receives, and is how we're doing it right now. Council conduct and communications with the public is, provides guidance to council as how they're supposed to do that, without violating any due process rights before the items come before you. Chapter 7 is the council confidentiality policy, it just reiterates the Brown Act in making certain that it's understood that any confidential closed session remains confidential and isn't disclosed to the public. And chapter 8 is a new chapter, like chapter 7, which establishes procedures for handling reported violations of any of your council policies and procedures. I would say in that chapter draft, there is a reference to code of conduct policy violation, and that should be changed throughout to council policies and procedures violations, as opposed to just a code of conduct policy, because we call the whole policies that, instead of just code of conduct. And with that, I'll turn it back to you for any discussions or further clarifications, if you've got any about these policies, and we also can put it up on the screen if you'd like to see the actual written wording.
Did you want to include 1.3 and 5.2 at the bottom?
I did do 1.1. I thought I did those.
Between 5.2, language added to guide appropriate interactions between council members and staff?
Yeah. Thought I did.
I must have got ahead of you. Thank you. Questions? I'll start to my right. Councilmember LaFaye?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. On my left, Councilmember Echols?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question for you, City Attorney Schultz, with regard to the changes that are being suggested in chapter 7 and chapter 8, they're actually additions in terms of council confidentiality, as well as enforcement. And we did receive some public comment regarding those sections. Could you please expound a little bit on where those came from, and if those are consistent with other jurisdictions? And just give us a little bit more information regarding those two chapters, please.
Sure. Chapter 7 is very consistent, you'll find that across the board, because it's just reminding the council of that confidentiality requirements under the Brown Act, to make certain they're aware of those. So those are pretty basic ones you'll find in most. The next chapter is a chapter that I prepared for another organization a few years ago that was having difficulties with that. I'm not sure, I'd have to do research if any other ones have developed it, but I developed it out of looking at other cities, that's how we kind of go about it. You do need some type of enforcement if you're going to have this many policies and procedures. It's bound to come up, that there's going to be someone who claims or does say there's been a violation of your council's policies, and when that happens and you don't, you kind of just have to figure it out as it goes, and that's what I think has happened here in Morro Bay, if there is that request that comes in. So this kind of outlines it. It provides a process with the city attorney and the city manager, as long as they're not involved in the violations, to go over the violations with the mayor. If the mayor's not involved in that, if the mayor was involved in the allegations, then it turns to the mayor pro tem. And you go over that procedure, and I've had to go through that procedure in other cities, probably, I'd say, at least a handful of times, where we had to look into allegations. And you look at the investigated, it's a very high-level investigation to determine whether it's a minor or a major violation. It's not defined whether it's minor or major, that's determines made by the committee. And if it's a minor, then there's just usually counseling that's done, and I would say almost every single time I've been involved in this, there's only, it's always been a minor, and you use counseling to remind the council member of the violations. If it's a major one, then you do have to have someone else do that third-party investigation, because now there will be potential repercussions, other than just a verbal, you know, counseling. And in those cases, you know, you do do a report, and you do have what's called a, I call it an internal investigation, just as I've done a number of those internally for different cities. And when that's completed, then it's given to the council, and they can make a determination whether they want to take more formal action. And it spells out exactly what that formal action, obviously, no matter what the council does, member does, you can't remove him from office, but there are certain things you can do, going from just removing the council member from the assignments he has with other agencies, or a public reprimand, and so there's things that you can do. So it spells out the process that you go through. Certainly, if the council doesn't want to have in there, you've survived 21 years without it, and so you'd be perfectly fine to just kind of figure it out when those complaints come in, to figure out how you want to deal with them. But I found it very helpful from a staff standpoint, but there's also, you could change any of the wording, it's not a, it's not a perfect document, maybe it won't work for Morro Bay, where it worked incredibly well for other cities. So that's how that one came about.
Thank you. And one last follow-up with chapter 8, specifically enforcement, and thank you for going in depth there. How would you respond to the suggestion that those enforcement measures might be politicized or abused?
It's no more than there's anything else. And what I find it, if you don't have this in place, it can turn into more politicized, because there's no process that you go through to determine what's the correct, is it counseling, or should it be an internal investigation that's from somebody independent? And what I find, if there is an allegation, someone's violated a policy, then it comes just right to council, and now it's everybody just feeling if they want to, what type of reprimand you want to do, so it's much more public than it is politicized if you don't have a policy in place.
Thank you.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes, I would, kind of same, along the same lines as Councilmember Echols, could you let me know the reasons for the change in 1.3 regarding, like, the early feedback to staff, that section?
Sure. I mean, that's just a, it's good practice to make certain that staff isn't blindsided at a council meeting by any questions you have. Obviously, there's times when you don't get to it till Monday afternoon or Tuesday, but certainly if you have questions, and instead of trying to, I don't know, I've seen where they hide the ball, council members, or they want to have a getcha, if you've got the ability to ask those questions beforehand, so that staff's prepared, that's going to make a better meeting, you're going to get the information that you need for those decisions. But it's not a, it's not a situation where if you, you know, didn't know about it, it's an encouragement that you get your questions answered beforehand of staff, and that all council members have that. Obviously, if one asks a question, you're all going to get the answer, so it's just a procedure to make your meetings move more smoothly. But again, that's just a suggestion, if you don't want to have it in there, because it doesn't fit for Morro Bay, any of these can, they're your policies and procedures, not staff's, not mine, but they're yours.
I guess I just asked for clarification on that, because I felt like the change is really not so much a change, it was already stated in the previous policy? It's just a different way of wording it?
Oh, maybe there are two in there. If they are just different wording, then we could either straighten out which one sounds better.
It's just a more, it looks like it, to me, if I read it right, it's just a more detailed, and it seems, yeah, it seems like the message was already there, and you've just kind of reiterated it and made it more prominent, maybe.
Okay, well, we certainly looked at that again, we try to not be duplicative of something we've already said.
Okay, and then I also had a question about the 1.6 with the visual aids. And that was really in-depth, and I'm wondering where that one, is that just like a standard policy, or?
Pretty standard. It was, probably came out of COVID time, when there was so much difficulty with viruses and images were being placed, you know, on the, in Zoom meetings, and then also with equipment. And I know we're redoing it, certainly if we've got the ability to have the overhead projector, that's a different issue. But I did have a city that, someone gave them a USB drive, it wasn't on purpose, but it did have a virus on it and messed up the computer. So it makes it a little bit easier for staff to get it just earlier in the day, and be able to ask IT, and it takes a second, and then you're back, and it's a good practice. But I also saw one of the comments, when someone said that if they bring a flyer for an event, and that it never happens in Morro Bay, so certainly, again, this is, if it hasn't been an issue, it's just a suggestion, anything is in there, I don't believe, you know, it has to be in there, but it certainly kind of gives staff and the public to know exactly how you get these things and make them available if they want to at a council meeting.
Well, one of the comments I thought was about having the ability to use an overhead projector, which wouldn't get a virus. So would that be something that could be added to that as well?
If we have, I mean, I haven't seen a, you know, back in the day, yes, we had the projector all the time, I haven't seen it since I've been back in the seven or eight months, so I just don't know if we have the ability to, with our new system and everything, if we do, and it's going to be here, then that's certainly something we can incorporate in.
Okay.
And I think, I think the city clerk has a comment.
Okay. First, I just wanted to mention that the flyer that came up during public comment tonight was brought to me in paper form, and I was able to take a photo of it, download it with my USB drive to the computer and bring it up for her. But also, it is my understanding that the very old overhead projector could be used with the new system. Obviously, that's not tested yet, but it may be an option that we can consider using in the future, if that turns out to be more convenient.
Thank you. And then, one last one, to go back to 1.3 with the, I think that had the use of electronic devices in there, and I guess that also involves, no, I'm sorry, it's 1.7.3, with phones, the use of digital, is that it? I'm not looking at it. Well, I guess I was just trying to clarify whether someone is using, because some council members use their tablets, and how is a tablet really different than a phone?
I think, I think the policy you're referring to is the one where you just shouldn't be using that to communicate outside the meeting, but you're right, a tablet could be the exact same. So we could, we could make a clarification of that policy. I'm trying to find which one, I know which one you're talking about, but it's not 1.7, it's 1.3?
Yeah, I think it's 1.3.
Okay.
And then that's all I had.
Thank you. Questions, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Interim City Attorney Schultz, I guess the question that I would want to ask first is, how did you, what was the impetus to all of this review, and how did you go about it? Did you do this with the mayor, was it on your own, was it with staff? I think that's my first question, where I'd like to start.
So I think in December, it might have been at my first meeting, or when I was watching it right then, there was a request to review the council policies and procedures. I think it was the first meeting when the new council came in, so I took that as already something to start to look at, and so in my spare time, I've just made notes and gone through a lot of the issues that I found that needed updating, mostly by law, but other ones that could possibly, you know, to give you ideas on what needed to be changed. And then I met with the mayor and the city clerk, and we went over that, and the city clerk had changes that she thought might be good to do, and so did the mayor, and then now we've brought those forward to the council to take a look at, but no decisions on anything were made. And like I said, you know, you could remove chapter 7 and 8 altogether. And like I said, you know, you could remove Chapter Seven and Eight altogether. There's a few of them I'd probably say you really need to have those in there, like the telecommunications, because the Brown Act's changed since then. But a lot of them are just what's the best fit for the council.
Yeah, thank you. My concern is, is, and this is, it's important that I preface this with saying that I reviewed the 527 meeting, just to kind of see what the situation was when we, I believe the mayor introduced this as a future agenda item. And I will, on behalf of you, the mayor, the room was very disrupted. We had just gotten through the reconsideration of the roundabout, and there were people getting up to leave, walking around, talking. I do know that you addressed them, which I appreciated. But the issue that I had is that this was brought forth as a future agenda item with really no discussion as to how the process was going to go. And I felt personally that if we had had a moment to kind of just talk about that amongst the five of us at the time, we may have had more come up that we wanted to talk about, maybe less, maybe other areas of the document looked at. And in this case, when you limit it to you, Mr. Schultz, and the mayor, and the staff, without, you know, perhaps having a committee formed, maybe that would have been an option. I do understand that this is how it has worked before, not saying it's the way that we had to have done it, but at least having that discussion so that maybe there would have been a fair opportunity for the other four of us to contribute to what was going to be reviewed on pertaining to this document. Maybe even we could have been surveyed as to the areas of, you know, what we really wanted to see work done on, something of that, maybe one-on-ones, anything could have happened. But this is how it transpired. So part of me came to this, the diaspora, thinking, you know, I don't know how comfortable I am with having this conversation in its entirety. Interestingly enough, we ended up talking about those last few chapters that were added right here out the gate, which is fine. I was kind of hoping that that wouldn't be the case, but that's where we're at. So I did want to make sure, and thank you for your, your comments with regard to, that you started this document around 2001, that you've encouraged for reviews in the past. I am just concerned that the additions of Section 5.7, Chapter Seven, Chapter Eight, and talking about misconduct of elected officials, looking at minor and major violations, it just seems like really getting down into the nitty-gritty. And the other point here is not allowing for the public, especially when we get into the conversation. I wasn't sure how this was going to transpire either. Were we going to go in order of the changes made? That would be nice, especially if the public is here to comment about the very thing that they're, that is their right to have. So I would just like to ask right now, since we've kind of started, is there any way that we can kind of start at the top and then go through there? I have lots of questions.
Let's have the discretion on how council wants to proceed.
I guess my question would be, if you were that concerned with questions, why you didn't ask them before? You got this packet, and it wasn't just May 27th. This was asked for at the December meeting. I asked for, for future agenda item, and I feel as this is being directed towards me like it was sole source. You're a council member who can bring up policies and procedures at any time. There's been input by other members constantly. And then we got this on Thursday, so I'm not sure why you're, you're concerned that you didn't ask questions before then if, if they were of that grave concern. Most of this has been based on best practices from the city clerk and the city attorney, and I participated because I brought the future agenda item. We haven't, I don't know, I guess I would ask the city clerk, have we had subcommittees or committee meetings on policy? We changed policies and procedures a few years ago. They changed three times in one year. I don't believe, when I watched those meetings, there was any subcommittees.
It has happened different ways. Sometimes it's just been the direction of council to bring back a policy on, you know, use of city facilities, something along that line. And there have been at least two occasions that come to mind, possibly more, where a council subcommittee was established and they alone kind of did the rework and brought it back to the council as a whole. So it's been done different ways.
Yeah, thank you. And I certainly wouldn't have wanted to be a part of that meeting without the city attorney and city clerk or the ones facilitating. I was just along for the ride. So, you know, I don't know if Mr. Schultz's counsel or decision, do you want to go through each item?
I don't know if I really want to go through each item. I would be more in tune to make some changes that I have that I've looked at.
Recommendations?
Yeah, recommendations, and then go from there. I mean, I'm not, at least tonight, willing to go through this whole thing. I mean, personally.
Did you, did you have an opportunity to ask questions ahead of time for things?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Echols, what's your?
Yeah, thank you. I anticipated hearing from the public and then addressing specific areas in there that we wanted to maybe massage or amend, but the bulk, other than Chapter Seven and Eight, is existing, essentially existing policy. So that's how I, I thought the process would go.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum?
I'm definitely not interested in going through them one by one. I have a few that I'm, you know, I pretty much called out. As also, I mean, there's a couple of other little tweaks, but I'm comfortable with it otherwise.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum, if you have some specifics you'd like to ask?
Edwards. Edwards, it's okay.
Counsel, Mayor Protem Edwards, if you have some specifics, I think that the council's interested in trying to move on to public comment, but certainly your time on the floor to ask some.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, I did ask questions actually prior to the meeting. I did speak with the interim city attorney. I did speak with our interim city manager this morning, just in particular about the future agenda item and what happened in terms of the setting of it and how we weren't able to discuss the process. I completely appreciate and want to honor that this was how you would like to proceed, but I do want to say that I did ask questions. And so the questions that I have tonight then are going to pertain to the items that were changed.
Perfect.
Okay. So I think what I would like to do is go into Section 1.123, which defines the hours of meeting as 5:30 to 9:30 PM. We often run past the 9:30 PM. So if we are going to allow for public comment, this is, so this is going to be pertaining to general public comment, which is 1.3.73. We often run past that time. So I was wondering, how would we allow for public comment after? How are we going to adjust for that if we only allow for the 30 minutes in the beginning and then we, you know, allow for people to speak at the end? I wanted to understand how maybe you, your thoughts on that, Mayor.
I would ask the city clerk, for starters, to share the policies of the other six cities or the information we have from the other six cities on best practices of what they're doing and how we had this conversation.
Of course, I polled the other cities just to get a sense for how other agencies are handling general public comment and received the, some, some helpful information back. First, Grover Grande allows one minute per speaker during general public comment for items not on the agenda, but there is no total time limit. They do allow three minutes for public comment on agenda items. Grover Beach recently changed their policies to only have one public comment period during the entire meeting. That's for items not on the agenda and on the agenda, only one public comment period. There is no time limit for that, three minutes per speaker. Paso Robles allows three minutes each during general public comment, but it is limited to items that are not on the agenda. So you can't choose to speak on something later in the meeting and not stay for that item. Does that make sense? Making sure I'm making that clear. I did not hear back from San Luis Obispo or Pismo, but I did get a late response from Metascadera that was notable. They have a limit of 30 minutes for general public comment during their meeting. It's kind of in the middle of the meeting and they call it a community forum. Three minutes per person, total of 30 minutes.
Thank you. And I believe the mayor of San Luis shared with me when I polled the other mayors that they do a 30-minute and they have speaker slips the city clerk takes because there was a comment about whether or not the mayor would align those, and the city clerk takes them and calls the names out. So that's where we came. The question you have, and so some of those other cities have no end time. They have no end time to the meeting. So if you want to end time at 9:30, we're not getting our work done. We're not getting agenda items, items on the agenda, business that's been scheduled done, without having to go till 10 o'clock, 10:30, or move them to another meeting. So because we allow public comment for items not on the agenda, people are speaking to items on the agenda then because they don't want to stay till that late. Those are items that we have business to do. So it makes sense to say, we're not going to limit the time, but allow 30 minutes and do the business of the people that is scheduled so that the people who want to stay and hear the staff report and hear the conversation, instead of speaking ahead of time and leaving, have that opportunity. Then at the end of the night for items not on the agenda, when somebody wants to talk about the art in the park or whatever it is, then that's their choice to stay. But the people who want to be here for the business items, speak to those business items and hear the council have the conversation that allows that time. The only other suggestion would be that we take away the end time, which, when I was on council before, we had no end time, and we were here till 11 o'clock at night. So, I mean, we're not, we're not making good decisions at time of night, so.
Not at all. One thing I want to clarify is that this says "may." It's not a mandatory situation, so I think it would be the discretion of each meeting. So we're not making a mandatory 30 minutes. It's just "may." And so I think we, we need to be aware of that, and I would like to make it mandatory, but "may" is fine, because these meetings are way too long, and some of the public comment, they can write in emails. We get emails all the time, and they can discuss it at that point in time, too. So I have no problem with it, and it's, again, to the discretion of what we're discussing that night. And, you know, if we had a lot of kids in here, we probably would allow it a little bit more. So I don't think it's a draconian mandatory, it's a "may." So I think we have to keep that in mind.
Well, and again, these are policies and procedures. They're not, none of this is law, other than the things that the city attorney's sharing with us that are legal, binding things. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. And I'll be curious to see what some of the questions are or comments from the public, because I do, for example, if we have 10 slips, if you get 10 slips, and each one of those has 30 minutes, then that's it, you know, if we were, if you were to choose to do that. So then it got me thinking about when we have presentations, for example, and we have a presentation where five people, you know, take their three minutes and they have visuals and things like that, and that eats up 15 minutes. And I'm just trying to understand, you know, kind of your process if something like that happened and we, you know, these are just situations that have happened to us and can happen to us in the future. I don't know, maybe some other group would want to do a presentation. But these are some of the items that I've been thinking about, and I think maybe I just will stop there.
Well, and those are the choices that those community members could make to go to the end of the evening if they want to wait for those presentations. And again, San Luis City does it where the speaker slips are all turned into the city clerk. The city clerk calls the 10 speakers. So, you know, that's, that's their process.
Mayor, can I get a clarification on the scenario that you described with the meetings going, you know, there not being an end to the meeting, or the, you know, the meeting ending at 9:30? If we still allow public comment at the end, how would that be different?
Because hopefully, the speakers who are wanting to speak to the items on the agenda will have that opportunity rather than taking the public comment at the, well, I mean, it may or it may not. But do you want the speakers who are here to speak to items on the agenda, that is the business of the people, or do you want to take the hour time and not have the time at the end of the night because somebody wanted to share with us the Girl Scouts are having a bake sale? And I'm not picking on the Girl Scouts. I mean, you have to, you have to make some, or you do away with the end time, because we're not finishing the meetings on time. And, and again, I'm just looking at best practices. None of it's set in stone. You know, it hopefully will encourage people who are coming in groups to be more succinct and have their voices. You've seen where there's been many speakers, and they've shown their signs and supported the speakers that are going up there. I know when there's been community organizations that have come, when we've done the grants, they've had one or two people get up to speak on their behalf, because otherwise it's just the same thing over and over and over and over and over and over. And, and again, as Mr. Schultz alluded to, you know, this is, some, some communities, unless I misunderstood that, Mr. Schultz, it's items that are on the agenda, pertain to the agenda, not just?
So, yes, Morro Bay, a little history lesson, I guess. Morro Bay is very unique. You won't find another jurisdiction for the items that are not on the agenda, which you have to have under the Brown Act. We also have the rule that you can also speak on items on the agenda if you want to leave early. You won't find that in another jurisdiction. I find it interesting that Grover Beach, and I tell you how we got to that conclusion to allow that to happen, and I find it interesting, I think it was Grover Beach now is doing it where they allow all public comment and all the agenda items at the beginning, whether they're on the agenda or they're not. And that's how we used to do it in the 90s here. And we got threatened by a First Amendment rights group that we weren't complying with the Brown Act because it says that the public has to be able to speak on each agenda item, and they made the determination that each agenda item, meaning it has to be right before it. So we decided to change our agenda and allow for that public comment before each agenda item, but the public was very upset about that change in our policy because they wanted to come and speak on the agenda and go home. So our medium to make everybody happy was to allow this, you know, on items not on the agenda, you could still speak with it. So it creates a problem in that you do during that period of time, that should be short, and if it's just items that are not on the agenda, now go longer. And that means your agenda items go longer, and it's not about what you do at the end of it, it's whether you finish business. And that's been the problem. I've noticed a few times, we haven't got to agenda items, which is not efficient from a staff standpoint, it's not efficient for those people that want to speak during it. But what's the solution? And, you know, it's troubling that, yes, if you limit it at the beginning. I've found that when it's at the discretion, it says 30 minutes, but if you've got one or two more speakers left, then over, every single mayor is going to say, let's get these done so they don't have to wait around. But if you do have the 45 or 50 people that want to speak on an item that's not on your agenda, you're pretty certain you're not going to get done with your agenda items in that night, which some of them could be very important ones that have to be finished up. They might have time crunches. I've seen it where they've, the county tried this, you move all of the items not on the agenda, the public comment, to the end of it, which, you know, I don't think that's the answer, because then you don't have that ability, you know, you're not getting any public input on items not on the agenda. I have seen it in communities. It's remarkable that when you do have this in yours, you'll find that the community comes together, and actually, when they see that there's more than your 10 people, as you mentioned, times three, they actually cut their time down to make sure everybody gets in within that 30 minutes or close to it. So, you know, it's not a perfect policy, and there's problems with it, but if, again, if it's not an issue that we're having, then maybe the policy isn't necessary, it was plugged in there, because this one, I think, has worked the best in the jurisdictions. Some of them are 30, some of them are 45, and some are an hour, though. So it doesn't mean you're stuck with the 30 minutes, but it certainly did help in all the jurisdictions I've worked in, making certain that you get to your business items and get them done in a, in a reasonable hour.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and again, I want to, just a shout out to thank the city clerk, Ms. Swanson. I know you have these items constantly since you are the clerk doing this, so I appreciate your input, your recommendations, your suggestions, and, and as well as the city attorney, because as Mr. Schultz alluded to, some of these are legal issues that have changed as far as Brown Act. So the revisions to the policies and procedures is nothing new. This is something that happens, like you said, for 20 years. There's been, however, he said, 39 iterations. So with that, if there are no other questions, I'm going to open public comment.
Yeah, are we going to be able to come down?
Are we going to be able to come down?
Yep. Yep. Let's get public comment. I have two speaker slips. Tim Crawley for two minutes, and Courtney Sheppler for three. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council, welcome back, Andrea. It's kind of like looking back 10, 12 years, looking at this table right now. Wish I could run like I could back then. Because I've been running the streets of Morro Bay for more than 40 years now. And around the time I turned 50, I started to compete. I never won a race, but sometimes I'd come in second or third in my age group. But once, once, I was the fastest person in the period of point race between 50 and 55 years old. And that might have been because nobody was competing against me. Kind of like the last election. But I won, and every one of you did, too. And every one of you wants to be here. And you knew what you were getting into when you vote, when you ran, or at least you should have. And I want you to know that, okay, excuse me. Now, it's just not right, you want to change the rules mid-race between all of this. I mean, you, you might not agree with this, but limiting the time of speaking is sort of a form of self-centrship. Because unlike you, not everybody wants to be here. Hell, I don't want to be here. I prefer to, I prefer to read the agenda and look at the amendments and everything at home. I mean, sometimes I don't agree with you to do. Often, I don't agree, but at least I know what's going on. And I think that limiting the period of this, the 30 minutes, is wrong. You got to give them at least an hour, maybe cut it down to two minutes or something. But people come up here, it's, it's a sacrifice, a lot of them. You know, you know how it is, they're tired, they don't want to deal with this. And I'm hoping that even though it's inconvenient, that you continue to let the people of Morro Bay come up here and speak their minds about things that concern them. Because that's your main job, listening to the people that you represent. That's your most important matter. That's all I have to say.
I'll start by saying, I think you should defer voting on this item tonight. I think that there's a lot in here, and it doesn't sound like everybody's had the opportunity to work through the process, ask questions. On a big document like this, it's helpful to read it more than once. And if everybody just got it on Thursday, it's a lot to go through and digest. And Mayor, you've had a little bit more time than your fellow council members on it. I think every council member should have the opportunity to really go through it and meet with the city attorney and Dana, and answer, you know, ask their questions and say, well, what if we said it this way instead? And have a few options available. And then you guys can come back together in a way where everybody feels like they're starting at the same place before making these changes. So that's what I would say. Don't vote on this tonight. It's just kind of jamming it through. I also recommend, or recognize how difficult it is to try to edit a document like this in a forum like this. It's ugly. It's painful for us, too. So I wanted to comment just on the, the things I care most about that I saw in these edits. One is on the public comment. I, you know, if you know, A, I think you've got to enforce getting the speaker slips. I always fill out my little speaker slip. And, you know, so you had two, right? But if 12 people come behind me, you have no idea what you've got coming up in terms of the total time allotted for public comment. So I would recommend, you know, that section in your policies hasn't been amended. That's something you could amend, where you require a speaker slip if people are going to speak. So I think that would be a good addition. And then you can look at it, and you know, if you've got 50 speaker slips, you know, if everybody had three minutes, you're going to be here all night. So you cut it down to one minute. Sorry, that's all we have tonight. But at least give everybody their option. You know, everybody's treated equally. Everybody who shows up on time gets to speak at the beginning of the meeting, instead of being punished and having to wait until the very end, you know, sit through four hours of stuff that they didn't come for. So that, that would be my advice. I don't know how you would operationally, you know, we do have a lot of people that come up and speak during open comment about items that are on the agenda, because they say, oh, I have plans, or I can't wait. And I just don't know how you operationalize that policy of saying you can't do that. When they, when they're up here and talking, how are you going to hook them? How do you get them away from the podium, when they've already started talking about what they intend to talk about anyways? Then, let's see. The, the last thing I would say is Section 8. You know, there was some comments earlier about the city managers, and what's confidential, and what's shared. And this section, or this Chapter 8, it seems like it's set up in a way where it can just really create a, a place for people to grind axes with each other, and tar and feather council members that maybe are on the outs with the city manager and the city attorney, or something like that. It's not going to be constructive. It's going to be expensive, a lot of legal bills, and a lot of heartache. There's a better way to do it. So take, take some time and find that better way.
Public comment is open for this item?
Gosh, twice in one night. First, I apologize for not filling out a speaker slip. I didn't know I was going to do this. Historically speaking, as a former council member, I think this improving and upgrading our, our policies for meetings is very, very important. If you don't pass this tonight, I hope you do it very soon. I can remember sitting through far too many meetings at midnight, where things were not accomplished, because some people just talked too much. I know my husband's one of them. But I think it's terribly important to upgrade this. Look at, historically speaking, what's happened in this city, what you're trying to do with this council, and this, and our business people who are working here. So if you don't pass it tonight, please think about bringing it up again very, very shortly, and working on getting it passed, because, believe me, it's very important. Thank you.
The comment that I have, sometimes I don't want to speak. I don't have nothing to speak about. But somebody will say, come up here and say something, I'll say, hey, come on. I disagree with that person, so I'll come up and speak without a slip. I like that system. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Going, going, gone. Back to council. Any other, Mr. Schultz, any comment on Chapter 8?
No, I don't think more than I did before. I mean, it's the enforcement mechanism for it. You should have some type of enforcement mechanism, so that staff knows what to do when you do get a complaint. I, like I said, I've used that process, and it's worked very well without costs to the city. I mean, obviously, with an in-house city attorney, it didn't cost anything. So it did work well, but that doesn't mean it's the only avenue that you have for enforcement. But there should be something, so that it's just not a free-for-all amongst council, when there is an allegation of a, a breach of your code of conduct or your policies. The only other comment is, is you can't, you can't require speaker slips. They can't be mandatory. So that kind of prevents that issue.
Yeah, I had that down. You can't require someone to give their name, their place of residence, or you can't require them to do a speaker slip, yes. But that does make a challenge. Thank you for the clarification. Okay, let's move on to comments.
Well, if we're going to look at this tonight, a couple things. I think we should keep the moment of silence. I don't see any reason why. I think that's just kind of a nice way to start a meeting. I would, you know, that's one of my comments. I don't know why we want to take that out. Is there, was there a reason for that, Rob?
Me?
Oh, okay.
I've been through many iterations of the moment of silence, that when it was added in, then it became a quote, or rotated through council members, then it became religious groups coming in from all different varieties each meeting, then it became Gary Ryan doing jokes. And so, rather than doing away with it, they just keep trying to find other ways to, I mean, if you want to do a quote, or this or that, it doesn't preclude recognizing or taking that if there's a reason we want to recognize the loss of someone in the community or whatever. But, and, and I don't know, maybe Ms. Luker, Mr. Schultz, or even Ms. Swanson would add some of them I may have missed, besides religious jokes and quotes.
All of those, plus, historically, we did actually do a prayer and had a different denomination come, nomination come each time. And again, we were threatened, because there was a group we hadn't included, but we couldn't find anybody from that group that would come for the prayer. And so then that's kind of where it changed. And then we also had one prayer that went a little bit longer than we anticipated, and we didn't have a timeline on it. So there was, there's reasons why we've changed policies, and it's up to the council.
That's just my comment. I mean, I, I can go either way on that. And again, on the 30 minutes, it's "may." It's not a mandatory. So I don't really think that we should be discussing that. I, I'm sure that the mayor, at appropriate times, it might be an hour, but then we're going to have to suffer. So I, I'm, I'm fine with that, too. The other thing, 3.31, it said if there is a council vacancy, that there has to be an election. I think we should have the option to appoint someone, so we don't have to basically go through the expense of a, a special election.
I believe we, we have an initiative that was passed that says we have to go to election.
Oh.
I believe, don't we appoint someone temporarily, and then it has to go to the next closest election, I believe? Because that's what Councilmember Ford did. She was appointed, and then they had a, a primary election, the next closest election, I believe.
You put that language in there, because it, it seems like in the language that you have to have an election, but, you know, we can do an interim appoint until the next, so we don't have to add that expense.
The next closest election.
Please.
And I think that is in there. Is it not, Mr. Schultz?
I'd have to take a look at it and see, to make sure it does comply exactly with our initiative states, instead of what state law.
And I'm, I'm fine with all this other stuff. I mean, I'm not a big procedure person. I mean, unfortunately, I, I've signed a lot of legal documents. I don't really look at a lot of them. And that's just, that's just me. So I'm fine with the document here, as is.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum?
I, let's see. Are, are we doing the whole thing? The whole?
Whatever your, whatever, we're on comments right now, before we move to motion.
All right. My comments would be, I, let's see. I'm not really interested in what other cities in the county do. I, that's not my interest. I feel like I was elected for, to help provide transparency. I'm really proud of Morro Bay's community engagement. I think it's more than any other city. And I, I wish more people would participate, and I, I encourage, you know, I'm all for that, people having a, being able to have a voice. I understand the, you know, the argument with getting business done, and, and the, the solution to put the public comment at the end of the meeting. And I'm just, I'm kind of torn by that. I, while I was in Montana, I watched a Zoom media, or I watched a live meeting of a city council meeting there, and what a, what a nerd I am, huh? I'm on vacation, and I'm watching city council meetings. But it was a big one there, and it ended up going until midnight. And it was the third meeting that they had had on that same subject. So I just, I, and, and you know what I noticed about that meeting, is the public comment wasn't the part that took a long time. It was the council members. They really had very long comments, and that, to me, took a lot of time. But, so I'm in favor of, I think I am in favor of leaving the public comment as it is now. I would like to have us be able to use an overhead projector, if we can, if we can dust it off. And even if we couldn't, I'm sure one of those doesn't cost that much money. It's pretty low-tech. And I think that's all for now. Oh, the moment of silence, I'm good with, with the way that's written, the change.
Thank you. Mayor Protim?
I, I actually did reach out and ask about the overhead projector, and I do believe you're right about that we have that, and that it is in operation, that we could use it if need be. But I really appreciated what you did tonight, being able to take a document and put it up there for us. So I just wanted to mention that. I also, just out of curiosity, because I think in Section 1.372, I think it's with conduct to hearings. I'm just curious, because we mentioned that we can't have people do public slips, but I think it says in here that there's an option to request speaker slips when there's 10 or more public members desiring to speak. I don't know if that's something that we could do, or that would be helpful or not. I'm just throwing that out there, because then you, you kind of know what you're working with. We have that there. There was another section where it was mentioned that all requests to speak should be submitted prior to the start of the public comment period. I don't know if that's referring to the slips or not, either. So just wanted to point a couple of those out. There was a question, I think, Mr. Schultz, with regard to 1.5 AB 2449 teleconferencing. The new regulations, I understand, having to exercise the use. However, was there anything that, that would have been different in my situation, where I was coming from, where I was in, in Monterey, and it was for a special meeting, or a special closed, you know, meeting called for a closed session? Was there anything that would have been done differently in the new language?
No, I don't believe so. It applies to both special and regular meetings. At least, that's my understanding, but we could check on that.
And then, I think we covered the use of aids. I did find out that Arroyo Grandi actually does use, Mayor Lan, sorry, Councilmember Landrum, that Arroyo Grandi does use an overhead projector. So we might see if they actually implement that or not, or how often, if that's something we want to do. And then with regards to access to communication and technology systems, Section 2.3, I, I had a question, because I've, at the beginning of, when I got elected, I run a service business, so I already had a cell phone that people call me to book appointments with me, and it would have been odd for me to say, you know, thank you for calling the Skin Stop and Councilmember, Member Edwards. So I did purchase another phone, just to kind of alleviate that from happening. And I was happy to do so, so I'm not asking for anything. But I'm just wondering, for me, since I already have one, it's not really something that I, you know, matters to me, so I just wanted to put that out there. The other thing that I did want to ask, Mayor, we both use iPads for meetings, and I prefer that, because it's easier for me to travel with, have my purse. And I did talk to Mark at IT, in IT, and I asked him, was there any sort of security concerns, you know, that we would have between using the iPad, or the, the book, you know, that we've been given to use? And what was interesting, he just kind of blanketed, coining everything, mobile devices. And in essence, he told me that the tools that he had to handle our lapbooks when we got them two years ago, he feels much more confident in what they have in terms of tools for, you know, cybersecurity and all that stuff now. And so he, he wasn't worried about the iPad. So I want to share that with you, Mayor. And then the other thing, let's see. Oh, I did have a question with regard to Proclamations 3.14. Just, just for my, my processes here, is how, how do we prioritize, how would we prioritize recognizing individuals, groups, or events with significant... or events with significance to Morro Bay community? I guess I'm wondering, you know, how would we define that, and maybe what has been your experience, Mr. Schultz, with, I know, what would be considered, you know, Morro Bay significance to the community?
I would not even know. That's usually handled by the mayor and the city clerk.
I was going to say, I defer that question to the city clerk, can I answer that for you?
That'd be great.
Thank you.
In my mind, that means honoring the services of our city staff, Public Works Week, Tree City Proclamations, EMS Week, all of those things that we do on a regular basis, and it might mean that out of time constraints, that we would decline to present a proclamation for an outside agency that has no direct connection to Morro Bay.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, city clerk.
And Mayor Protem, if I can add to that, excuse me for interrupting. It's not, we're still acknowledging and sending those proclamations, we're just not having the public presentation for those that are not relevant to, and that's the way the city clerk has handled it, pretty much, is for the groups that come and speak, or Seattle savvy, or the NEP, or the rec department, or the police department, or something like that, that's a part of Morro Bay in bloom, those things, versus the national things.
Okay. I just want a clarification, so from here on out, it won't be necessarily national things or regional things, it'll be much more pertinent to our community directly, for the verbal part, thank you, I appreciate that. And I think we covered most of the stuff with regard. I still am not comfortable with the chapters, you know, seven and eight, but I understand whatever council wants to do, majority-wise here tonight, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Echols?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just have a couple of items. 100% back getting rid of the moment of silence, I know the history on that, it did come from a prayer, and I think folks were hesitant to change, and so they wanted to leave it on there, and, you know, now it's turned into some form of unself-guided meditation or something. It's just a waste of time, so we don't need it there. The next item, I understand the desire on limiting the council members' comments to three minutes or less. I would suggest that we put language in there that says suggested time of three minutes or less. I'm thinking about, back about when the floods happened before this council, and I remember each council member going slightly over three minutes, but it was really needed time for council members to communicate with their constituents. So, I think the language, if we could put suggested time of three minutes or less, that gets the message across to we council members up here, don't be too wordy and cut it off when you need to. Let's see. The next item that I have, and this is for the city attorney, it's item 3 dot 11, the amicus participation. This is, this allows our city attorney to, and this wasn't changed, this was existing, this allows our city attorney to file an amicus brief if the legal advisory committee of the League of California Cities has urged participation, and this is before we had adopted a legislative platform. So, I would like to add language to that that says, "And the brief is consistent with the city's legislative platform."
Excellent addition.
Thank you. And then, the last item that I have is private, personal, and confidential mail, it's item 5 dot 6 dot 3, and it calls for a two-day time period. Paper mail addressed to an individual council member and marked private, personal, or confidential shall be date stamped on the envelope or package, and shall be logged in the city clerk's The original will then be placed in the addressee's city mailbox, which means the council member's mailbox, unopened. If mail has not been retrieved from the council member's mailbox within two business days, such mail shall be retrieved by the city clerk's staff and handled in accordance with section 5 dot 6 dot 1, which means it would be opened up. So, I go in and check my email once or twice, or, did I say email my mail? I go in and check my physical mail once or twice a week. So, I would suggest that we add to that clause that the city clerk notifies, or someone, staff notifies, the council member that they've received that, because if we're not notified, we don't know it's there.
It's an assumption on my part that, of course, we would notify you.
Okay.
But, yes, we can add that language. Thank you.
Great. And those are the specific suggestions that I have to offer to my colleagues tonight. I do agree with Councilmember LaFaye that the word "may" is extremely important there, and it provides for the flexibility. And then I just want to emphasize, too, those are for, that restriction on the 30 minutes is for items not on the agenda. So, I'm looking at that as beneficial, in that it allows the council to give full time to our constituents, to speak about items that are on the agenda, it gives the council time to deliberate on those items, and for items that are not on the agenda, they're important, but they're not as important as those business items that need to get taken care of that night. And so, that combined with the mail language, I'm fine with that, and the new, the addition of chapter eight, if it, I'm good with that, too. If it gave severe heartburn to a number of members on the council, I would be, I'd be fine with waiting two weeks to approve the entire document. I don't see the need for that, but if folks really had severe heartburn on that, that felt, I don't know what would be changed there, frankly, but, and I'm fine with that. So, I would like to move forward with approving it tonight with those specifics that we mentioned, and any other specifics that council members mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Echols. Mayor Protem, thank you for the clarification on the iPad and that technology, because we do, and I use mine because of attending so many meetings, it's much less cumbersome than carrying these big computers. So, I switched a long time ago, just because then, when I leave a meeting, I can shift to my own personal business. I, I think the gist of it was, they don't want us playing on our phones up here, and I forgot my computer and my iPad tonight, so I'm having to try and squint to read my phone, so I'm thankful that technology, these days, we can, that and paper, like Mr. LaFaye. Got to make light of it sometimes. The cellphones, yeah, I agree with you on that also. I've already used mine for two and a half years with the number I have, I'm not going to change my phone number now, because I would have to change everything, and the minute you take one call, one email, one anything pertaining to council, it's subject to public records request, and at this point of that ship, but for those who feel they need it or want it, I'm not, I don't object to that by any means. I, as far as the overhead goes, I would hope that if that's something we're going to use, that we would try and use the one that's existing to see if there's really even that much, you know, I appreciate that there's opportunities for you to screenshot and download it, which is probably quicker and easier than dragging out an overhead, if we have one still available, but I don't know that, at this point in time, I would want to go out and spend money on one. Loving that we have our new vets hall almost done, enjoying the change in the ceilings and the lighting already. I guess I would just ask, before we start moving into looking at a motion, if there was anything the city clerk took note of during these conversations that you might feel we should address or didn't address before we move into?
One very small thing that Councilmember Echols mentioned for the mayor and council member announcements, that we have suggested time limit, same for city manager announcements, which was suggested to be limited to five minutes. Would you want the same language used there?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, I think the added flexibility is a benefit.
And I think we chose to put that in to try and hold ourselves accountable, the same as we're asking the community, so that we can actually get to the business of the evening, but there are times, as you shared, when, or you shared, when the community has a lot to share, and we're going to extend that time, the same as, these are best practices, these are policies and procedures, they're not, nothing's written in stone. Thank you for that. Mr. Schultz, anything to add?
Nothing further.
Thank you.
Could I, could I ask for a clarification?
Yes.
With the limit to council member updates, I'm just curious how, if someone goes over five minutes, how that will be handled? Is there, should we have a section nine to talk about how that's going to be done?
I think.
Is there a penalty for that, or who's going to tell the council member? What if it's the mayor that's going longer? I mean, how do we?
We can, I mean, we can go on good faith, we can ask the city clerk to set a timer. If each one of us takes five minutes, that's a half an hour of our meeting time. The, I believe, and maybe either the city clerk or the city attorney can help me here, I believe that the, that part of the policies and procedures language, does anybody have it up by any chance? What it says about, it's supposed to be pertaining to, thank you.
Yeah, underneath that section, it says that council member announcements are intended for reporting back to the full council and the public on items, issues, or meetings associated with other council duties. Example, assignments to other official bodies, attendance at league conferences, et cetera.
So, I think the intent is just to keep us a little more on track, so that we're not talking, you know, some of us all attend the same events, and then all five of us talk about it, so, you know, maybe it's that by the time it gets to me, I just say, "We all attended that," type thing, so, yeah, I think it's just about self-checking ourselves. I mean, I'm more than glad to, you know, put a buzzer up here. Just kidding.
So, that, I mean, as long as I've been sitting in this chair, what would happen in that situation, is a council member, or the mayor, would come to me and say, "Someone has been just abusing that time, and it's running over and over and over," and then I would be the one that would go and mention to that council meeting, that member to keep it down to closer to that. It doesn't say "shall," but there's just been the complaints. 99 out of 100, that's going to work. There's going to be the one time, maybe a council member just says, "No, no, I don't care, I'm going to do what I want," and in this case, this is why you'd want chapter eight in there, because then there would be, you'd call that procedure in order and determine it's probably minor, and now, instead of just coming from me, there would be counseling from the mayor, or whoever, if it was the mayor, from the Mayor Protem, saying to please keep that to that. And if you had a council member that just refused to do that and keep to your policies and procedures, then you could actually bring forward an item for that council member to reprimand him, or to take away his, add another one. Now, we're using that as an example, and not, let's say, divulging confidential information from a closed session, which is, you know, very important, so I don't think that would ever even get to that, you know, maybe it's, you know, one in a million you'd have that. 99 out of 100, when you mention it to a council member that there's been a complaint of going over, they, oops, sorry, I didn't realize I was, and everything goes back to normal. But it gives you that ability to at least have it in there, that hopefully they'll keep to a time limit.
Thank you. Are you good with that, Councilmember Landrum?
Yeah, I am, and I didn't address the part of this item that had to do with the actual, one I brought up, which was the cellphone, the council member cellphone, and the reason I brought that as a future agenda item was after getting the records request from the Tribune, and I think maybe someone else, too, and what I had to do was go through my phone and my emails, my personal emails, and look for anything that had to do, had the word "roundabout" in it, and I had emails from, before I was on council, that had the word "roundabout" in it somehow, I didn't, just randomly, and it just struck me as super violating to have to provide any of my personal, you know, communications that had nothing to do with anything to do with the city, to these entities, and I, it was, it made me very uncomfortable, and so, I realized that that's a lot of money, and that makes me uncomfortable, too, but then again, I, I don't know, I'm really torn, so, I just wanted to tell you, tell the public that that's where that came from, for me.
Thank you. Anything else from the city manager, anything to add? She's like, "I'm glad it's not my item." Thank you with that, unless there's more comments. Councilmember Echols, you had some corrections or additions, if you want to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move, could I, could I, in my motion, could I defer to the city clerk to list the changes that we suggested? So, let me get to this item. There it is, resolution 4425. So, I moved that Morro Bay City Council adopt resolution number 4425 with the following changes as detailed by the city clerk.
The two that I captured are the section regarding the city attorney's filing of an amicus brief, that we would add the language, and the brief is consistent with the adopted legislative platform, and then with regard to the section on the handling of confidential mail, that it would specify that staff will notify the council members that they have confidential mail in their box.
And then the one, just, the one additional one, I think that we were all agreed upon was the three-minute limit.
Thank you, yes, correct.
That is suggested time, and then the suggested time of five minutes for the, for staff.
Understood.
Was there anything else that needs to be added to the motion? Yeah, that's, that's in there, that's in the resolution? Yeah, so I think, yeah, so that's my motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, and I'll ask for a roll call vote, since Councilmember Landrum is not present.
Councilmember Echols?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember LaFaye?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0, and next time, I'll do that differently.
That'll be different next time. Motion maker first, and motion second maker, and then down. Thank you. Future agenda items. Anyone to my right, to my left? Councilmember Landrum?
Yes, pardon me, I do have a future agenda.
Hang on. Thank you.
The, and it may, I'll just, I want to get it on the record, but it's consideration of our fireworks ordinance, so this was brought up by the public, it was also brought up by our fire chief, and I don't know that it needs to be an urgent matter, but sometime before next July, or June.
I'd support that, and, yeah, I would want to give them time to work with the other fire chiefs and fire marshals in the county, to see if they're coming up with some standard recommendations, yeah? Councilmember Edwards, you're good?
Yeah.
Councilmember LaFaye, Councilmember Landrum?
I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, okay. So, we have support for that. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned. Thank you.[1728.13]